For seventeenth, we'll start the regular planning commission meeting for the village of Franklin. I'm going to do a roll call, starting from left to right, my left to right.
Quincy Harrison, present.
Lyndon Novak, present.
Stuart Wooders, present.
Pete Halick, present.
Sarah Greslick, present.
Paul Reigman, present.
Alright, so we have a forum, and Jeremy is absent right now, so. The adoption of an agenda, any updates or questions before making a motion on the agenda? I think everyone that is here wants to be that.
So, we did receive some correspondence in the last couple of days, it was this revised letter, nothing that requires an update to the agenda.
That's correct. I'll bring it up in my council liaison report, if that's alright?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, so, can I get a motion to accept, adopt the agenda as written?
Make motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Good, good. Okay, so then, minutes, any updates or comments or questions about the minutes?
So, I guess I would ask that, page three, two, four, sixth bullet point up from the bottom, Halick agreed that there should not be a space between the fences in the R3 district, I would ask that that be revised to, Halick agreed that it's a difficult-to-service space between the fences would be undesirable.
One more time please?
So, that, it says right now, it says agreed there should not be a space between the fences, and if we could just say Halick agreed that a difficult-to-service space between the fences would be undesirable in the R3 district. Okay, appreciate it.
Any other comments on the minutes? Okay. Any motion with the modifications that Pete made?
We've accepted minutes with modifications made.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright, Pete Sullivan, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so, David Salley is not able to attend with us tonight, though he'll probably watch it later, but he requested that I share some of his points for the council liaison, and mostly just wanted to convey the gratitude from the council to the planning commission for the diligent work product that they related to the nuisance abatement analysis. The council was tasked with each person independently reviewing the analysis to identify the types of nuisances they would like to see covered, including potential additions, subtractions, or amendments to our current ordinance. Minimally, there is alignment that the relevant nuisance ordinance will, I'm sorry, nuisance ordinance be pulled into a single section. Once the council aligns on the scope of the nuisance abatement ordinance, we will refer it back to planning commission for draft. And so I just want to second that, being in that meeting. Council was really appreciative of the efforts that the planning commission put forth in getting the table for them that they could read through. Several of them had already read through and made some additional, made some updates, that's why you received in your packet an updated letter from Chris with regards to the table and that change. One of them was covered already, it just was not easily noticeable with regards to rodents and nuisance animals. And then, the other one was also covered under the fact that rubbish is also considered, I'm sorry, yeah, rubbish is considered garbage in our ordinance already. So, there was no change other than the fact that it actually was covered when we said it wasn't covered. So, the council's receiving a copy of that as well, so when they do their reviews, they'll be, I believe, Chief, that the council's getting a copy of the update from McKenna for that nuisance ordinance? Can do, please? Okay, thank you. I think Chris forwarded it on to you, if you don't mind sharing it with council, so when they're doing their review this month, they'll have those at least two updates. Alright, and in addition to that topic, a green space committee has been expanded to add a member of planning, which is myself, but I would like to open it up to the table as well to include another member of planning in the green space committee, which currently consists of three trustees and then myself from planning. It makes sense for me to open it up to anyone that's interested in joining the green space committee. It's, the current active members are trustee Hanson, trustee Solaka, and trustee Gates, those three from council, and then myself. So, do I have any, anyone a taker right now, or are they good? Just want to provide feedback to me directly and I can reel it on? Or if you want to be in the meetings, let me know.
I can't make a full commitment to it with my schedule, but if there's times where you would like somebody else there, I'd be more than happy to join.
I would as well, that's what I was gonna ask, and we have two, and I knew you were gonna speak to.
Yeah, I can include you in one of those meetings occur and make you part of those, is that fair?
Two is okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, let's put it this way, I mean, it's gonna come to planning eventually at some point anyway, might as well be able to.
Not it, trim it down before it gets to us.
Well, at least have a clear input, thank you Pete.
Yep.
Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
Alright, then, so that's, those are the main points I had from council. We should be getting back the nuisance ordinance back from council in that regard. And just like I read from trustee Salley, they were in favor of a recommendation to pull nuisances out and combine them to a single location within our ordinances. It'll minimize issues, I think we had already talked about doing that anyway, based on the recommendation from McKenna, so they're in agreement with that. Alright, any other questions for me with regards to council meeting or anything going on? Okay, then we can move to commissioners' reports. Feel free to, if you have a report backed on something you worked on, anything, please let, we can take the time now.
Nothing I personally worked on, but people know I'm planning and just work with the village, so they kind of mentioned it to me here and there in just some small conversation, but I don't know how to address it, but I was reminded today because of this building plan, but I wanted to ask Chief, since he's here, have there been a lot of towing requests in the downtown Franklin area as of late?
Is that second, what request?
Towing.
Towing, vehicle towing?
Vehicle towing.
So, we don't tow from private property, but our job is, is that we will get called by the person that manages or has control over that property and we have authority to give us, you know, a tow vehicle.
Okay.
We make sure that it's signed correctly, that there's proper signage for the law, and then we'll make sure that the vehicle isn't stolen, and then it's the business owner's responsibility to call BOSS Towing, that's who we use, they come out to tow the vehicle and it's charged to that business owner.
Okay.
For the towing.
Okay, thank you.
But you have not noticed an increase in those?
Well, I think since, you know, the Franklin Oyster Bar opened, there's been a little bit of contention with a neighboring business, that business has towed vehicles, but I know that the Oyster Bar has been telling its, you know, patrons that you're not supposed to park there, it's clearly signed by both businesses, it says don't park there. So, there has been an increase, I would say probably ballpark of maybe ten vehicles that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank Heather, I know she's no longer here, but I wanna thank her, I feel like the master plan work really got stalled and we had worked really hard on it, and she really cleaned all of that process up and really worked hard to get that through in a very fast and very organized way, and it was noticed and appreciated, and I thought her communication with all of us was wonderful on it, and I just wanted to call that out because I thought it was very well handled and I really liked it. So, thank you Heather, where are you?
Yeah.
I would second that very much, yep, Heather was a great service to us.
Great. Any other, okay.
So, I do have, yeah, two things, I guess. I was commenting on your part of it about, I noticed Mark from the church, the Main Street Franklin president, did an excellent job of canvassing and going around to the businesses. I think it's a great example of what Main Street Franklin is good at and what they're well positioned to be doing. And he discussed parking with the building owners, building occupants, because I think that, you know, a lot of relationships could be made that would benefit everybody, and Mark really, I really thought he did a fantastic job when he spoke at the council meeting about the work that he did, talking to different buildings, about how parking can be shared and that, you know, trying to get people to work together to share our parking so that we can have our businesses be successful. The other thing I was made aware of, I guess it's a report in the sense that village drainage has been a significant issue, and I've had many people approach me about drainage and realize yards are getting flooded and they used to not get flooded, and, you know, why is my yard flooding? And, you know, some of the flooding that's been going on down Vincennes and Evelyn is still pretty significant. I wondered, do we still have this place online where they can submit, you know, their concerns that they have water in their yard? Does anyone know? I know we had it at one time under Roger, but I guess, you know, I try to direct them, you know, here, get your input in, and I know there was funds toward it, so I just wanted to make that, bring that up so that it's out there in the atmosphere.
Just in reference to Evelyn Court, I have gone over there several times, and President Goldberg has been involved.
Yeah, yeah.
HRC's involved, and it's just looking at what is the best way to solve that problem, you know, there's several different price points.
Right.
So, they're still looking at it, I have met with both owners of the property that, you know, actually there's three owners of the property that it would affect. So, you know, I encourage people if they have issues such as drainage, they're welcome to give me a call at the village hall or stop by.
Great.
That's awesome.
It's interesting, because same thing I was watching at the meeting, and when people put in a new driveway, do they not have to file an application for that? Because what I've noticed when I'm out walking, because I've been consciously looking at that, is how many people have like cemented off when they've put in new driveways.
Yeah.
The cover, and I'm thinking, well, how'd they get a permit to do that? Wasn't it inspected after?
Yeah.
I noticed it with one of my neighbors the other day.
Question for building and.
That done look good. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the problems, I think they've also seen on north side along river as well, but over in that area they had problems where people either aren't maintaining their ditch or when they're, or they're filling it in because it's, they don't want low rise, they want a flat lawn. So, that's a concern. Okay, call village office and, or come in and talk to Chief about it.
Or maybe we can make that agenda item moving forward.
It's more of an enforcement problem, I think, than anything.
Yeah.
Because really, you're not supposed to change the grade of your watershed on your property. Unfortunately, the village does, or the flow, and the village unfortunately doesn't have great records on flow. I know that when Roger, because this came up a lot with Roger as well, when Roger is involved, he would try and take the records during the site plan review for a new build, but that was really the only mechanism he was using to get any watershed information is when they did the site plan for a new build on a house, then they have to do a survey and then they know the flow of the watershed, so.
I mean, it would be wonderful, I don't know if a map exists, but to have a map that shows, you know, where water can be directed. There's many places, you know, that are in the village that we really want to get the water to, and it is kind of a, you know, you're getting intuitive feel, intuitive feel for where it needs to go generally, HRC obviously is helpful in that regard, but if there were maps, it'll certainly be helpful, maybe that, you know, something the planning commission could help with if they.
Well, Pete, I've got some good news for you, I'm pretty sure.
You've got one in your pocket?
No, not in my pocket, no, I'm pretty sure my, a number of years back, one of my neighbors, he went ahead and did a watershed map because he has a lot of watershed, starts on his property, and we had found out his pond there is actually directly feeds into the river over here.
Right.
So, it goes through all that, so he did a watershed map to figure out.
No, even in our master plan, it shows these three drains that we have. I mean, one runs through my backyard.
Oh, no, I mean, he did a, he paid, by himself, he paid an extensive one.
So, he did it?
So, I'm not sure how extensive it was, but I'll ask him if he has a copy of it and see if it'll be beneficial.
That'd be really interesting, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other commissioner's reports? Okay, zoning.
There's no meeting.
I thought you had one the next day, last week, last month, after our meeting.
Good God, canceled.
And then tomorrow's got canceled too.
Huh?
Then tomorrow's got canceled too.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. I was really looking forward to hearing. Alright, budget and expenses.
I can go out and stir some stuff up.
No, please don't, please don't, it's controversial enough to be.
Pick some fences up.
Okay, actually, I believe, I don't remember seeing it in the packet. Do we have, we don't have any update in budget and bills, right? Because they're still trying to get through that?
Correct.
Yeah, so, well hopefully by next meeting we'll have, I don't remember seeing it in our packet, we'll have some bills to go through, at least look at the end of year, final dollars, and then how we're doing for this year. Okay, public comments, if you're here for an agenda item, you're welcome to come up for public comments, otherwise we're happy to hear from you during the point in the agenda that we'll be meeting. Alright, I'll close the public comments. And open the public hearing, it is seven eighteen or so, and we'll open for a public hearing to consider an amendment to appendix B of the village code, which contains a schedule of regulations for the zoning ordinance, second, for section twelve sixty-eight dot thirteen, subsections D and H, with accessory buildings. I'm assuming you're not here for the public hearing? I invited people during council meeting multiple times, I really, I really want people to come to these, even if you don't object, if you find it beneficial, it would be nice to hear from the public on these, on this. And not about the lions, please. Sounds like a good idea, thank you, I appreciate it. Alright, so, we'll, do you want to do this during public hearing or do you want to do it during the?
I think we could close the public hearing, right?
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and.
Because I do want to say.
Close the public hearing, unfortunately.
Alright.
Go ahead.
I do, you gentlemen are here obviously for the site approval, is that right?
Right.
Okay. And obviously, I should have said this before, and maybe we are a small enough body and a flexible enough body, do we want to consider moving them up on the agenda?
Yes.
I'll move the, I second.
As exciting as this all is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll move new business from B to A, I should have thought about that before, I thought we were a little faster. Okay, so then, updating the agenda, can I give a second to Pete's motion?
I'll give a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Alright, so consider the site plan application for three two seven five zero and three two seven six zero Franklin Road. Chris, do you mind kind of?
Yeah, I'll give you an overview. The site plan calls for renovation of the adjacent building located south of the new Franklin Oyster Bar and Eatery, and then the building will house various food preparation functions and storage for the restaurant. Both buildings are in the same parcel, and according to section twelve fifty-six point zero four of the zoning ordinance, accessory buildings customarily incidental to the principal permitted use on the same site are allowed sub-site plan and special use approval. Section twelve sixty-eight point three of the zoning ordinance provides requirements for site plan, and section twelve sixty-eight point three two deals with special use approval. So, prior to reviewing the site plan and considering the special use, the planning commission must hold a public hearing, so the only action that's required this evening is to schedule the public hearing for October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I can go through my review letter, but then I'll have to go through it again on October fifteenth. I can say that the applicants have addressed all the concerns that I had in my review letter the very next day, and so they get a clean bill of health when it comes to October fifteenth, but unfortunately, they have to wait till October fifteenth.
For the public hearing?
For the public hearing.
Okay. Are there any questions from planning with regards to this? I had a chance to look at it earlier this month, I didn't realize that it was actually an accessory building that was just south of it. But the exterior is not changing from what I understand, it's just interior redesign.
So, the foundation's not moving?
No.
Okay.
So, and why is it treated as an accessory building rather than its own building?
If it was its own building, there might be a problem, and it might not be permitted.
Is it all one lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Where is it going on there?
It's already on the.
Is it, is it?
It's an existing structure.
It is an existing structure, so you're just changing.
Is it building three or building two?
Déjà vu, right, the old déjà vu, correct? It's the.
Oh, so déjà vu's gone and it's turning into?
Yes, it's bacon.
Gotcha.
So, I guess what we could do is, we could go ahead and have a motion to schedule a public hearing for the site plan application, and then we'll have a more chance to review this, it'll come up in the public hearing to be able to comment. At least you good gentlemen will be able to come back during next month to talk about it. Any reason else to discuss it tonight? Anyone have any reason? Okay.
I'm thrilled that they need more room.
Yeah.
Any added comments that are needed?
I can explain it a little bit.
Just name and who you are.
My name is Nick Geftis, I am the executive chef at the Franklin Oyster Bar and Eatery. So, the whole purpose of this is, I think that, we, you know, we've, I think we've been here and discussed it previously, we were originally planning to develop like a coffee shop, bakery, and ice cream shop in that small building, and we were like super in love with that idea, and we still are. But as we got open, we were really, really busy, and, which has been a great problem to have. We're very passionate with what we're doing, and we're operating at a pretty high level, very, you know, involved, like homemade, straight from scratch cooking, whether it's bread or pasta or anything, we're making everything with our own hands in-house. We've got some very talented people, and we are at the point where we would have to either, if we were not able to get more space to prep food and store product, we would then have to reduce the amount of patrons that we could service, which isn't a problem that, we don't want to reduce the amount of patrons. We also feel that the village probably doesn't want to reduce the amount of foot traffic coming into the village as patrons to other businesses. And so, what we're, one of our partners had a great idea, he says, that little building, maybe we should turn that into a prep and storage facility, solve our problems, we can continue the volume and even increase to do some really nice events. And maybe we can find some other real estate here in the village to house our coffee shop and bake shop. So, what we were thinking is, we could take that building, keep it really nice on the outside, like I heard somebody ask if it was gonna change, it's not gonna change on the outside, keep it really nice, maintained, painted, just, it's gonna match and work right with the restaurant. So, the outside's gonna look great, and the inside, we'll be able to have the adequate amount of refrigeration, dry storage, prep space, so that we can keep this ball rolling, because we, I hope you guys all have enjoyed it to this point, but, you know, we're really into what we're doing and we feel great about it, we're really happy with it, so we would like to, you know, add on and, just so that we can do this thing right. We just try to do things the right way, so, that's why we feel we need more space.
How many square feet is that building?
Mike, I'm not exactly sure, is it like nine hundred?
Yes, nine hundred and ten.
Nine hundred and twenty-five. On the first floor and four hundred and ninety-six on the second floor.
Okay, yeah.
So, it'd primarily be a service building, wouldn't have seating or customers coming in?
That is correct, it is strictly, it would be a service facility.
And the restroom is for, is that, that'll be new for you too, right?
So, we would have, we currently have one restroom off the back that is accessed from the patio from the outside for our patrons, but we would also be building a bathroom on the inside for employees.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion then?
I guess, oh, I would just say, do you know what year it was built, the house?
I wanna say it was like the eighteen thirties.
Yeah.
It was like eighteen thirties, eighteen forties.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Eighteen something.
Yep, yep, I think you're right.
It's a really cool building once we started getting in there.
It's what?
It's really cool, like.
Oh, they cut the trees down in the woods and built that thing, you know, in the eighteen thirties.
The trees are still there.
Yeah, and they are.
Bark is still on those.
You're right, you're right, and I'm sure that, you know, historic district commissioner will go over that, but, yeah, I guess I hope you do understand, it is, it's a precious building.
Yeah.
From the pioneer days, and, you know, it's gonna need to be turned into a factory for making good stuff that will help our village a lot. And boy, I'd love, you know, those timbers in the basement, when you look up and you see there's bark on the trees.
You've seen them. They're still there.
It's like, it's really special stuff, and it's wonderful to see that you'll be able to put it, put a building like that to good use, and hopefully respect it too, boy, I know your floor's gotta be strong, you know? And boy, if you can sneak some joist in alongside of those wonderful timbers, without having to take them out, stuff like that, it's super important to us, it really helps our village to be able to have that kind of integrity.
I think it's important to us as well, I mean, I think that's, that's why, the reasons in which you're stating is why we're even here in this village to do our project, you know?
Pretty.
I think that we, we're super into it, we think it's super cool that we're, you know, able to have the opportunity to operate in these old buildings and like bring, bring like vibrant life to it, you know? But with keeping, like you can see the design that we did at the Oyster Bar, I mean,
Yep.
We kept in every step of the way.
And you had a building that sadly, the historic one burned down in the mid-seventies, you know, we put that thing back together, opened spotters, got that thing beefed up pretty good.
And like down where the timbers are in the basement, we're not gonna do much down, we're not gonna do much of anything down there, I mean, we're gonna clean it up, make sure it's nice and it's good, but that's not where we're going to be operating.
Sure.
You know, what we're gonna be doing is mostly upstairs and, you know, wall coverings and stuff that could all be taken down at some point if needed, so.
Fair enough, yep, that's great. And I guess, you know, speaking personally, we don't want to hold you guys up in any way, and I think, I think we agree with that, that we're trying to make this thing go.
And we want, we want to go through all the proper steps.
That's great, that's awesome.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Number one, what is the zoning on that building? Is it not retail?
It's commercial, yeah.
Is it commercial, I mean, is this even a use that will be allowed as a per area as opposed to a public?
Well, because it's accessory to the restaurant.
That's why it's an accessory, okay.
Yeah, yep.
Ding.
It had a.
All one property.
So, here's my other question. So here, here's my other question. And I'm, I, I think what you guys are doing is wonderful. I love your restaurant. We've been in there several times. But I am a little concerned that you're going to get some kickback from the public because, you know, that was part of the story going around is that, yeah, we're going to have two different places to come. And yes, one's going to be very upscale and the other one's going to be, you know, more user friendly. If you had any kind of discussion about any kind of a public facing thing, I mean, even if it's, you know, doing meals to go from four to six or something, I just, are you prepared to answer those questions if they come up in the public?
I think that we are. The, so like I mentioned, we, we have no intention of not following through with the previous project that we had in mind. We just feel that that might not be the space for it, where there's some other real estate that has, you know, come on the market that might be a better, a better fit for our ideas. So, you know, I, I don't want to, I can't over promise, but at this, I hope you understand where I'm, where I'm going with this.
Again, I'm just acting as devil's advocate.
Sure.
You know, ask if you've anticipated those questions because honestly, I think that this will be a public hearing.
Yeah.
That bodies might actually show up.
Yeah, great.
We, we have every intent to follow through with our previous plans.
Reading things and understanding things and following things. But it's, I think it is, it is a good point. But it's also exciting that you're looking at other, you're looking at other opportunities. I think the potential's tremendous. The getting, getting relationship with the cider mill, you know, I think there's tremendous potential for, you know, the kind of thing that would be really great for Franklin.
Exactly. So, yeah, we feel great about it. We're excited about it. And hopefully we have some more good news to come get approvals for here in the, in the next few months. You never know. So.
Thank you.
All right.
I just wanted, so I'm looking at the blueprint. That, that entire T is the plot where you have it right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, goes the way down, it goes over the hill into the river and, I mean, behind the plaza building.
Okay. I just know it was that big.
We have that driveway closed off on that side of the building, don't you, of the restaurant, between the restaurant and that building?
We don't anymore. We, we did at first because we were just afraid of people getting hit by a car.
So what's going to happen then when you open the food prep? Are you going to send people walking back and forth across that driveway with?
No, the, the people that work in that building, work in that building. And that, but at some point we have to bring.
But it's going to have to be transported.
Yeah, no, but all that.
There's a door there.
Yeah.
There's a door there. They can walk or drive.
I think her concern is safety for.
Safety for people walking out carrying, you know, trays of prepared food to bring it into the restaurant without, if that driveway is open.
Well, largely, that transport would happen before we're ever open. So I think, I think that we would be okay. I think we'd be safe. Our, our, our biggest challenge has been making sure, like, we make sure our staff, when they're coming out running plates of food to people on the, patients on the patio, we're like, you guys got to look both ways. Like, before you go out that door, you know, you got to look both ways.
I'm just wondering if that, that isn't something down the line if this whole thing happens that.
It looks like though.
That shouldn't be closed off.
It looks like the main prep area.
We would love that.
It goes out the back anyway. So it looks like, I was looking at this map. It looks like most, all of that would go out the back anyway, not out the side. This side is only used for the ice room, and that's a smaller, smaller portion of the business thing that's going on.
They still need to get across. And again, yeah.
I don't think there would be an increase from what we have now. People coming back and forth. We've got people in and out of there all, all night long while we have patio open.
Yeah.
Right. So I don't think there would be an increase.
And we can, we can follow up with it in the public hearing as well.
I want you guys to be happy.
My understanding, and let me know if I'm wrong, but this was brought to my attention, was that you originally did close that driveway for safety reasons, which I agree with. But the business behind you with the office building, that's the parking issue that we're having, the owner of that is the one that has rights to that driveway out to Franklin, and she's the one that wanted, demanded that roadway go back open. So that's why it's open.
Oh, she had the right of way. She had, she had an easement to have people park, drive through there to park.
The, the building to the north.
Interesting.
We had worked to deal out with them to be able to access fourteen mile because for these exact reasons, right? Like, try not to have too much, those are very tight driveways. And, yeah, they, they, they sent us a letter, said, hey, you got to open this back up. All right, well, you know, just, we, we made sure they knew, the only reason this is there is not to block their access. It was so that people didn't get hit by a car.
Right, right.
So that's not their problem, so.
Any, any other questions before making a motion? Can I get a motion then to move this to a public hearing?
Motion to move this to a public hearing next month.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Do you have a comment you want to make?
Mike Yeager from Skillform. One quick question. The public hearing, we will not have to go to Historic or anything for, I mean, we're not changing the exterior.
If you're not changing the exterior, Chris, I believe they don't need to go to.
I don't think they do.
And is there a way to expedite our planning or our building process review? Are we allowed to submit for building? And as if it passes public hearing, we can cut some time out? Is that something that we're able to do?
That is.
The building department's review?
That's an administrative question within building department.
Antetn Bill, Denon.
Yeah. And he's, he's also part, he also supports the Historic District, so you can ask the same question to him at the same time and he'll tell you whether or not you need to do that. But yeah, talk to, if you're, like, we can't make any promises that, until the public hearing with regards to approval. So, but, but yeah, go to him directly if you want to have some, have things checked out.
So you just have like a conditional.
Right, yeah.
Approval subject to.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm Andy with TSA, the builder. So I did try to submit this to Bill, and he, that's how we ended up here. So my question would be, you know, if we're willing to pay the review fees, do you guys have an issue if Bill starts reviewing the plans?
It's not really up to us until after the public hearing. So we can do, we, so we.
It's contingent upon your approval of the next meeting. I mean, to me, it's just a matter of his time to review the drawings. And if we're willing to pay for it.
It's, to me, it's more about the procedure to do it. We have to stick to the procedure to do it right. Otherwise, everybody could just pay the builder to review it and wait before the public hearing happens. So it's a precedent that's been set. Unfortunately, I think we need to wait for the public hearing just because, like I said, precedent's been set, unfortunately. I know what you're saying. I agree with it. It's, it's a good idea to expedite and make it efficient, but it's not about efficiency at this point.
Chris, do you have any comments or flavor on that?
Get my turn eventually. Go ahead.
I think ultimately it's up to Bill, but I, I think it's the proper way to do it is go through the public hearing and get a decision by the planning commission first.
Sorry. Oh, I was just going to say, you know, the properness, the etiquette, what's right, what's not right. Unfortunately, it puts Bill in a position where, what if it doesn't get approved? And then he sunk a lot of time into it. So it does put him in a tricky spot.
You pay him for it. This is a one-page blueprint, no walls moving, one bathroom going in. And I'm hearing you guys say you don't want to hold this up. Weather's coming. We're willing to pay. Bill and I go all the way back to nineteen eighty-six. That's a long approach for him.
Right, but the thing is, we can't, we can't guarantee that, that there's not going to be an issue.
If I go to the counter tomorrow, can I say they didn't have an issue with it?
That's the problem.
No.
Because we haven't gone far enough yet.
I don't think it's appropriate. I think.
Yeah.
We want to.
I don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah. And we, you know, we, we've tried, we, in the past, we've helped by having a, a separate meeting to have, to speed things up.
Yeah, we could do that kind of thing.
For the oyster, but we still have a minimum amount, minimum amount of time for public hearing. That's added cost to the village to also add those meetings. But if, if we could go through the proper channels, we, that's where, that's where we want to go. So, sorry. Okay, that's, any other comments or discussion on the site plan application? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're excited, we're excited though.
Thanks.
Okay, elections of officers. Chris sent us, sent you an email. I don't know if you have to go through the, the full rules, but every time we do one of these, I ask him to send out, you know, what the expectations are, what, what it is for election of officers, what are the duties of the, of the different offices. As I had mentioned a couple years ago, when I was made chairman, I kind of wanted to democratize this, these roles as far as flow of mobility. And so I would like to open it up to, for, instead of nominating individuals, if people are interested in throwing their hat in the ring, I, I'm open to stepping down as chair and letting someone else take over. Having, having done it for a couple of years, it's a good, a good experience. We have plenty of experienced planning commissioners at this point as well that we can open that up as well. I, I'm happy to serve again, but at the same time, I'm also would like to encourage other people to take the opportunity to meet with council and, and discuss those things with them as well.
Stuart, just for the purposes of the recording and everything, can you?
Yes.
Talk about which three positions are currently up?
Yeah. So the three positions are Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. And I'll just read the duties of the officers real quick for those that are watching. The Chair shall preside at all meetings and shall have such other duties as further prescribed in the bylaws and shall have a vote on all the resolutions and actions of the commission. The Chair shall have authority to preside at all meetings. In addition, the Chair shall have the authority to execute documents authorized by the commission. The Chair shall establish and terminate any committees of the commission and shall appoint committee members in a manner that gives all members an opportunity to serve on various committees at various times. And then Vice Chair, the Vice Chair, in the absence of the Chair, or the Chair's inability to act, shall preside at all regular adjourned or special meetings, public hearings, and shall have the authority to function as, in the same capacity as the Chair. Secretary, the Secretary shall have the authority to sign documents in the name of the planning commission and shall perform such other duties as the planning commission may determine.
And there's a footnote that mentions that the Chair attends the village council meeting.
Yes. And presents what the recommendations from, come out of this body as well as receive, makes proposals for activities that we do, as well as reports back on our various activities. And then provides feedback to, back to the planning commission.
So I guess I would make a comment as the current Vice Chairman that I'm, I enjoy it and I'm happy to throw my hat in the ring, but understand as well that, you know, that if there's other, other interest in the, in the position, understand that. But I am happy at what I do and, and willing to continue.
I would be happy to nominate both of you because I think you have done an absolutely stellar job at running the helm here. And I think you've both been calm and steady and eager and responsible and respectful. And if there's any other errors out there, you're both doing a great job. So I would nominate both of you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I second Linda's nominations for Stuart as Chair and Pete as Vice Chair.
I'll third that.
I mean, does anyone else want to take on the role? I'm just asking because I appreciate the nominations and we can, we can, we can accept and vote on it in a second, but I wanted to at least throw that out there. I mean, Quincy, show interest?
No, I'm more than happy to watch you do it.
All right, sounds good. Okay.
I do have a question though. How often do we do this?
Once a year.
Once a year?
Every year.
I thought so. I was like, I feel like I've been around for a few of these now.
You have.
We do it every year. It's just, it's just super quick.
I've been around for a little while now, okay.
This is, this is the longest we've taken, yes.
So how about for Secretary? Anyone, do you want to change? You want to?
No, I'm fine.
And you, anyone else want to take that on?
I, I, I would be happy to continue doing it. The workload has certainly not been overwhelming as Secretary. And I would be happy to relinquish it if somebody else wants to take it on. I'm just proud to be serving with all of you in one capacity or another.
All right, well then, I'll, I'll nominate Linda for the Secretary. If that's appropriate.
And I, I would just make comments about Lisa's, or I'm sorry, Linda's wonderful caring out of duties. And if those meeting minutes are not looking good, the tremendous help that she has been in many regards, in things that she does that, you know, we don't always realize about. Some, well, Lisa took, or Linda took care of that. And Linda's out there doing that. So all, all great stuff.
Okay, so I guess what do we need to do now for appropriate motion to, or I guess we were nominated, so now we just do a roll call vote or just regular vote for the three nominations? Do we, can we, do we need a roll call or do we, or can we do just a everyone aye or nay?
Uh, you can just do a roll call.
I'm sorry?
You don't need to do a roll.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So then, all in favor is myself, Stuart Wooders staying on as Chair for Planning Commission. Pete Halleck is?
Do we do them one at a time or?
Yeah, we should do them one at a time.
All right, as myself being, staying on as Chair for the Planning Commission for another year, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Crickets, all right. All right, all in favor for Pete Halleck to continue as Vice Chair for the Planning Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Crickets, good. Okay, all in favor for Linda, Taylor Novak staying on as the Secretary for the Planning Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Who, good.
It's tense.
It is tense. Well, here's the thing, like, I just want to make sure every year, because it comes up every year and people don't always know.
We're too much late on it.
It does. We've had many.
I know, I know.
We're supposed to do it now, right?
Okay, so we have a new business for discussion on the village ordinance, six-one-two dot zero-nine, licensing of dog, dogs. And I think, Pete, you know more about this than, than any of us, maybe a little bit, because came down from Southfield Township, I believe.
I, yeah.
So I'm sorry, I can't be helpful on this one.
Well, Mr. Dozen.
I don't think we received anything yet.
I was going to say, I do have a document that I can refer to.
Okay, so let me give you some background then. Sorry. So we received an email from Southfield Township with regards to the, they're planning on updating the dog tag ordinance. And we have been asked to review what the ordinance is coming down to us and then seeing what we need to update to be in line with, with, with them with regards to the licensing of dogs. I believe that's my understanding of this. Jeep, do you know anything more?
No.
Okay.
They're changing dog, they're changing dog tags.
It sounds like this is a wait to find out more situation on this. So.
I did look at, at our ordinance and basically it says in three sentences, the essence of it is dogs must be licensed and the license must be on their collar.
There you go.
There we go.
I believe Southfield Township is the one that you get licensing through for.
Correct.
So I've done this process and something that kind of confused me and maybe when we get it, we'll be able to see is that it goes for a certain amount of years, but they don't send you like a, anything that tells you it's up, which is really hard to like.
There's no enforcement, yeah, there's enforcement.
And I think that is part of it that makes it difficult. Like, we have the reminders in our newsletter of, hey, make sure you have your dog tags. But like, that part of it, as someone who is a dog owner and who's gone through the process, is very frustrating. Like, you don't even have to put it through your vet's office. There's no other than just filling out the paperwork to actually make sure you have it. I don't know if we want to look at that when we get in of like, what else can we do to like actually make sure, do we need to do something? Or do they want us to have a list or, of, you know, the tags that have been registered?
Well, and especially if your dog is chipped, you know.
Magic word.
So.
Dog's chipped.
I think that this makes sense to take care of at the township level and talk to them and see how it can, because if they're issuing the license or the tag, then it makes sense for follow-up and regulation be through them and not through the village. Because otherwise, we're adding an additional burden on the village for something that the township is actually taking, has license, licensing authority on.
Completely agree.
Completely agree.
Well, can we make, like, I, when we get it, we can't make like a recommendation of them of like, hey, it'd be nice if, 'cause it's their own ordinance, but, that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
We can make it harsher, I think is what you said, but we can't, so, okay, that was something that bothers me about the way it's done currently.
I-
But I guess the next meeting we'll have something to look at?
Hopefully.
Okay.
I had my German Shepherd for twelve years and not, we did it once.
Be explained.
What is, how are we supposed to do it?
I think you do it every year, I thought I got a reminder with my tax bill every year.
Right, it's supposed to be every year.
And then you, it's supposed to-
And he's not going.
The annoying thing is that they give you a notice to do it, but then, like, you can't do it for like six or eight weeks after you get the notice, until like the new year, so you have to like wait, it'd be nice if you could just do it when you got the reminder, but, I don't know, I think that was the issue that makes it difficult.
Yeah, when you get the, the reminder's too early.
Reminder is to tell you to do it two months from now.
What they should do is what Secretary of State does and has the thing at Myers, you can go redo your registration right there, and I just go in when I'm shopping.
Stand your dog.
'Cause I, 'cause I, 'cause I only remember to do my registration, 'cause I'm getting, checking out at the checkout, of course, and I'm like, oh, my tags, and I just pay for my tags.
My birthday's in two weeks or less than that, I need to do my-
Don't forget to, uh-
The stickers are the same color, they're orange again.
Me too.
Oh, really? You didn't forget, you didn't forget the amendment.
We got that, we're birthday buddies, um, well, you know, and the thing is-
We didn't, uh, finish the amendment that was public hearing.
We closed out the-
Oh, oh, 'cause we closed the public hearing, but we didn't review it, okay, so, yes,